Are we done?
Are we live?
Thank you. Good evening. It is seven forty-three P M. We are sorry for the technical difficulties that we've been experiencing. But I would like to call to order the April eleventh meeting of the Norwalk Common Council. If you will, please rise and join me in pledging allegiance to our nation's flag.
Pledge allegiance to our flag. For which it stands one nation, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Mr. Burnett.
Present.
Mr. Camacho.
Here.
Mr. Goldstein.
Here.
Ms. Najolski-Eichner. Ms. Smith.
Here.
Ms. Ayers. Mr. Uvelman.
Present.
Ms. Revolus.
Here.
Ms. Young.
Here.
Mr. Kites.
Here.
Ms. McMur. Ms. Alterman.
Here.
Mr. Meek. Mr. Livingston.
Here.
Ms. Shanahan.
Here.
Ms. Najolski-Eichner. Ms. Ayers. Ms. McMur. Mr. Meek. We have eleven. We have a quorum.
Thank you. We have eleven. We have a quorum. Next item on the agenda, the acceptance of the minutes of the regular meeting of March twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three. Do I have a motion? Ms. Shanahan makes the motion. Any corrections, deletions or omissions?
There is a correction from Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Camacho.
On, uh, let's see, uh, the section, let me get what page that would be, uh, sorry about that. Um, the, uh, a section that, uh, deals with the, with the ord- the demolition ordinance.
It's page seven.
Page seven, okay. Oh, sorry. It's down there. Page seven, uh, the language that was posed at the meeting and voted on is not the language it appears, whereas the changes that were voted on are not, uh, completely reproduced here. And so I believe that, um, that the actual changes that we voted on, uh, Mr. Candela has, but I can, but just for, for purposes of this, uh, with this meeting, I can say that, that the, uh, that the item should read as follows, fifty-five, three should read, no property owner shall demolish, comma, cause or permit to be demolished any building structure or part thereof without first obtaining a permit from the chief building official. So it should, so after demolished, it should be comma, cause or permit. Uh, and fifty-five, eight. I believe what was, uh, also changed was the last sentence beginning with, um, one, two, three, one, two, three, four, or five lines up from the bottom, uh, after, under this chapter, uh, for a single violation should have been deleted and in fact was, um, shall not exceed the lesser of thirty thousand dollars or, and then the comma and would followed in the case of the unauthorized demolition of a building structure or part thereof, that was deleted. And, uh, the balance remained, um, as is, uh, here. So, uh, and I think there was one other, uh, section that was changed, I think a paragraph below where the word homeowner appeared, I believe that was removed and the word property owner was inserted. Uh, but once again, I think that Brian Candela has these changes somewhere, uh, as I recall, that's what was voted on though, um, at the meetings.
I might, yeah, it's just.
Mr.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, I have a change, but I also, to what Mr. Camacho was saying, uh, I, we did send the changes, I mean, I think to Brian, you may have them. I can go over them as well. Uh, but just on page, uh, page six, um, after the, and then under ordinance committee, the first paragraph, the second line, it says, the thanked all involved, it should say, he thanked all involved.
Okay, listen. Any other corrections, deletions or omissions? See no hands raised from those on Zoom? Therefore, all in favor of approving the minutes as corrected? Opposed? If people who are on Zoom could raise their hand so we could count your vote, please. And Mr. Kites. Okay, all in favor, it's unanimous. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is public participation, I believe. Are there any people in the public who wish to address the council?
Uh, yes, the first person is Diana Lorachella.
Okay, Ms. Lorachella, if you unmute yourself, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor and Common Council. For the record, my name is Diane Lorachella at twenty-one Little Fox Lane. Uh, I wanted to thank you for having the virtual option. However, um, we must do more and a better job. We have to give I T. The help it needs, but also let's use our Zoom preferences and make sure you can see my face live. That, that's a keystroke as far as our Zoom contract goes, and I think the time has come for that to change. Tonight I wanted to talk about, uh, several, uh, good things with, uh, some suggestions. So the first is under D P W, number items A, four and five related to, uh, new, uh, options related to recycling, pilot pro- project in by I recycle with glass bottles and cans as a pop-up. And then, of course, the books at transfer station. These are both really positive things. However, I still think we need a more holistic approach that is still needed to look at long-term and public education on any of the initiatives that city invests in. Because the, the public needs to make sure this is something they can rely on and need to understand how to help the city. With that, I just also wanted to comment on item B, which is under land use and building management. Uh, one, A and B is the Board of Ed requested a rack body, body truck. They have said that they are moving to alternative fuels and they selected a fossil fuel, uh, type which is called propane. The thing is, they have to try harder and even the fact that they need a truck that is going to have a snowplow, there are electric options. And Mr. Mayor and Council, please just put your foot down and say, because I keep hearing excuses when police cars and other uh, fire department and Board of Ed and others keep saying all the reasons they cannot use electric, um, let the electric or hybrid option. I know we're starting a fleet with hybrid, but we could go much further. Uh, tomorrow night, Reckon Parks is going to be probably approving a van, a cargo van for Reckon Parks that is fossil fuel base. Just put your foot down and say, no more, starting today. I want to reserve the rest of my minute on the following, on item C one and see, uh, related to, uh, C one, which is related to economic development, and that is the capital budget amendments. Uh, line C, C as in car, oh, three, two, seven. Um, I think we, we need to invest more money in the capital budget on alternative energy and efficiency. On line C, zero, one, three, three, the main library needs much more investment and, and, uh, as far as much more than just, uh, seating and rugs, we need a full-based renovation and expansion. So we go to item C two. I ask that while I understand the thirty extra spaces at Eagles Lodge might make sense, the reason that you're doing it is what worries me. I have been asking for several years as to why we haven't begun the renovation plans for our main library. Our option with Mr. Milligan is coming to a close, and I, I think the public deserves to know what are the plans of this administration and the council today or tomorrow. We need to get moving on this, and I do not agree with some of the comments that are being made and the kind of gray area that, um, Ms. Jessica Vonecheck explained in the memo available to the public about why we need these thirty spaces. With that, I thank you. Have a good evening and please answer the question about the future of our main library and why we are not moving forward after six years to renovate it, expand it and make it a first-class library. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lorachella. Mr. Manzi, is there anybody else wishing to address the council?
Yes, next we have Alex Knopf.
Okay, Mr. Knopf, if you'll unmute yourself and you have the floor.
Thank you, uh, Mayor Rilling. Uh, members of the council, Mayor Rilling, uh, I'm speaking tonight as a private individual, not on behalf of the library board. And first, let me, uh, thank, uh, the mayor and the uh, common council back from, uh, two thousand seventeen for entering into the agreement, so-called option agreement that brought us, uh, onsite parking. Very convenient and very much appreciated by library patrons, by moms with strollers, by senior citizens, by people with disabilities over the last six years. And we need now to convert that into permanent parking. The purpose of my, uh, comments tonight is to ask you not to confuse the tail and the dog. The tail is the thirty spaces at the Eagles. If those are to be purchased as supplementary parking, because sometimes the lot behind the library is filled, then, uh, so be it. But the Eagle spaces should not be viewed, in my opinion, as a substitute for acquiring the lot behind the library to give us permanent, accessible, onsite, free parking for library patrons. The Eagles', uh, spots are simply not an adequate substitute. Why? First, if we don't exercise the option, there's no doubt that Mr. Milligan will try to build at least sixty-nine units, maybe more on the site. And how are seniors and moms gonna get around that building conveniently in the rain or snow? Second, uh, there is a legal dispute about the property line that separates the Eagles lot from, uh, the Milligan property and Milligan in twenty seventeen. As I understand it, filed a, uh, uh, dispute about the encroachment. And third, uh, these are temporary spaces for two years, renewable for two or four more. And if possible, it may be that the Eagles either sell the property or decide to rent them to somebody else. The best permanent solution is to exercise all or part of the option and give us the permanent onsite parking that a first-class library deserves. Whether or not you acquire the Eagle spaces to me is a separate question, as I say, don't let the tail here wag the dog. Thank you very much for the chance to, uh, uh, address you.
Thank you, Mr. Knopf. I truly appreciate it. Anybody else that wishes to address the council?
Yes, we have Tanner Thompson.
Tanner Thompson, Mr. Thompson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor Rilling, um, and, uh, and the council as well. Um, I am here to speak to comment on the, the capital budget vote. Um, I mostly want to thank the mayor for the inclusion of walkability and livability as top priorities and um, in his amendments to the capital budget. Um, I guess I got ahead of myself. I'm the, I'm a Norwalk resident, sixteen Hillside Place, number K five. Uh, and I also serve as the chair of the Bike Walk Commission. So, um, as such, I am very excited to see walkability and livability, um, as priorities here. In particular, I want to thank the mayor for including, um, the three hundred thousand dollars for T M P to do the study and design for East Avenue. Um, in particular, this, this money would go toward the, the section of East Avenue in front of City Hall, in front of the green, which is, um, one of the more dangerous roads that we have in Norwalk, um, both for drivers and for pedestrians and for cyclists. Um, it's one of the few roads in Norwalk where even I don't, uh, ride my bike on the road. I ride on the sidewalk um, because it's quite dangerous and I am very glad to see the money, um, allocated in the capital budget to start that process. So thank you very much. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Mr. Manzi, anybody else? Okay, seeing nobody else, is there anybody that's watching that wishes to address the council? Okay, so we will close public participation. Uh, there are no resignations, appointments or reappointments. So we, that brings us to the mayor's, uh, comments, a very brief this evening. Hope everyone who celebrated have a love, had a lovely Easter and Passover holiday. Uh, April is, um, Autism Awareness Month and, uh, which is an opportunity to, as a reminder, to create a more inclusive and supportive world that celebrates the strengths and vibrancy of autistic individuals. We will celebrate, uh, Autism Awareness and Acceptance Month on Monday, April twenty-fourth at six P M. At the Norwalk Green for a gazebo lighting and invite the community to join us, uh, so we would invite everybody to come out. Uh, yesterday, uh, several of us were present at the groundbreaking for the new, uh, Stu Leonard the Third, uh, swimming pool over across the street from Stu Leonard's and right next to, um, the Stu Leonard's Wine Shop. Uh, this is going to be a great, uh, addition to the city of Norwalk. Uh, the young people will be able to go there for swimming lessons. There will be scholarships available, and we know how important it is for young people to learn how to swim. We're a waterfront community with lots of lakes and other things. We want to make sure that people uh, can be safe when they're swimming. And I want to really give a shout out to Stu and Kim, uh, Leonard uh, for their courage. They had a very tragic event many years ago, uh, in Saint Martin, and they took that tragedy and they turned it into not only a powerful message, but a powerful program. And I want to applaud them for that. Uh, and I think we should all, uh, support them in any way possible. While I was at the meeting yesterday, I committed whatever city resources we have, uh, relative to partnering with them and for use of the pool and helping young people and, and the elderly to learn how to swim. Uh, going, moving on, uh, we have a Teens Night Out initiative in this Friday, April fourteenth, from seven to nine at the Bowling at Bolero Lanes on Connecticut Avenue, going to be kicking off the first event. Uh, this effort was very important to the city and was launched through the Norwalk Partnership, a citywide coalition that is comprised of community members and agencies throughout Norwalk. Uh, the idea behind these events developed in response to the Norwalk Partnership twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two youth surveys. Uh, so we, we are listening to the young people of the community, asking what it is they'd like to have in the city, and we're trying to provide whatever we can. It's critical to provide more fun opportunities for students to socialize in a safe environment and connect. So you can learn more about this and other upcoming city events in social media page and the Norwalk Partnership website. Um, one last, two last things or a couple, in celebration of Earth Day on April twenty-second, the city in partnership with the Norwalk Land Trust, Keep Norwalk Beautiful, Norwalk Green Association, the Saint Paul's on the Green, we're going to be hosting our second annual Earth Day on the Green Celebration from eleven till two P M. I also have been informed that this is, uh, the same day that the West Norwalk Neighborhood Association will also be holding their cleanup. Uh, and I encourage residents and neighborhoods and neighborhood associations throughout the city to engage in these activities. Unfortunately, we see too much litter, uh, and other kinds of, uh, things that really impact on the quality of life in our city. We see them around and, you know, I know people that go walking on a regular basis and they always pick up everything that they see and that we need more of that. We need more people to, uh, be responsible to pick up the things that we see that are making our city look not so clean. And we need to, uh, educate the public as to why they need to have receptacles in proper places, uh, so that they can have a proper place to dispose of whatever waste they may have. So, um, this is a, uh, like, okay, uh, I guess I missed something here. Uh, I guess we're still back on, on Earth Day. So fun-filled program would be, it would feature numerous educational activities for all ages, including nature yoga, readings, uh, music and informational tables hosted by the Norwalks Dedicated Environmental Groups with ice cream, food trucks and more. Prior to the event, there will also be Earth Day activities, including guided walking tours. If you haven't gone on a walking tour around the city of Norwalk, you really ought to participate in some of these. You'll be amazed at how beautiful our neighborhoods are. Uh, what a great city we have. You'll probably see things that you have never seen before because you're driving around the city and you don't have an opportunity to see some of the beautiful homes, the beautiful buildings that we have in our city. There'll also be a guided bike tour, which is also another way of being able to see some of the things that you might not normally see and a community-wide cleanup effort from ten A M. To twelve P M., uh, at assigned locations throughout the community. Others who have participated, I know, Mr. Livingston and Ms. Shanahan and others on the council have participated. And when you get finished with those two hours and Mr. Uh, uh, Goldstein and others, you'll be amazed how much garbage and junk we pick up, especially along the shoreline. Uh, it's really sad to see, uh, but I really encourage everybody to come out and I do applaud all those people that have participated in this in the past. It's critically, critically important. I know Mr. Burnett has also, I don't want to miss anybody. Uh, so, uh, you can also learn more on the city's social media page. Uh, and last, we hope to see everybody there. Do your part to keep Norwalk beautiful. We have a wonderful community here and we want to make sure we keep it that way. So thank you and Mr. Burnett.
Mr. Mayor, to you. Mr. Mayor, before you, Mayor, might I add that, uh, the sixth taxing district, Row Eighteen, is also doing a cleanup that same.
Great. Okay, now, uh, we'll have to stop by. My wife and I run around to all of the cleanups.
There you go. One seat far for you.
Okay.
Great, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and let the record reflect that council member Najolski-Eichner has joined the meeting. And, uh, moving on to the consent calendar tonight, council member Tom Livingston will be reading the consent calendar.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. First item, seven, A, one. Authorize the mayor, Harry W. Rilling, to enter into any and all agreements and other documents necessary to extend through April twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-four, the master municipal agreement for construction projects binding between the city of Norwalk and the state of Connecticut, acting through its Department of Transportation, originally executed in April two thousand thirteen. Seven, eight, two, authorize the mayor, Harry W. Rilling, to ex- enter into a subordination agreement and such other documents incidental thereto with Tower Plaza Associates LLC with respect to the city's sanitary sewer easement recorded in volume four seventy-nine, page five oh one of the Norwalk Land Records in a connection with Tower Plaza Associates LLC's E L U R application to the E E P. Seven, eight, three, authorize the purchasing agent to issue a sole source, sole source purchase order to able tool and equipment for a Chicago pneumatic compressor or amount not to exceed twenty-seven thousand forty-nine dollars, account noted. Item seven, A, six, authorize the purchasing agent to issue a purchase order to Frontier Communications Parent Inc. An amount of one hundred thousand dollars for the East Avenue Advanced Utility Project, number oh, three, oh, one, dash, oh, five, one, five, N P. Partial funding from C, the Connecticut Department of Transportation accounts, numbers noted. Item seven, A, seven, authorize the mayor, Harry W. Rilling, to execute an agreement between the city of Norwalk and Ty and Bond Inc. for professional engineering services required for the design of the undergrounding of the Elizabeth Street Overhead Utilities Project. Number R D two, oh, two, three, dash, two, for a sum not to exceed two hundred thousand dollars, accounts noted. Item seven, B, one, A, authorize the purchasing agent to issue a purchase order to Gabriella Truck Sales in Milford Connecticut for the purchase of a rack body truck to replace a decommissioned Norwalk Public Schools truck for a total not to exceed ninety-five thousand nine hundred ninety-one dollars, account noted. Uh, seven, B, one, B, authorize the MPS Facilities Department to issue additional changes for the rack body truck for a total not to exceed nine thousand five hundred ninety-nine dollars, account noted. Item seven, B, two, A, authorize the mayor, Harry W. Rilling, to execute an agreement with Pat Munger Construction Company, Inc. and the Nathan Hale and Westhawks Middle School restroom renovations project for a total not to exceed five hundred seventy-eight thousand dollars, account noted. Item seven, B, two, A, uh, to B, authorize building management to issue change orders on contract for a total not to exceed fifty-seven thousand eight hundred dollars, account noted. Item seven, three, seven, B, three, A, authorize the mayor, Harry W. Rilling, to execute an agreement with H V Contractor Corporation for the City Hall first floor restrooms refurbishment projects for a total not to exceed seventy-seven thousand dollars, account noted. Item seven, B, three, B, authorize the building office ability management to issue change orders on the contract for a total not to exceed seven thousand seven hundred dollars, count noted. Item seven, C, two, authorize the mayor, Harry W. Rilling, to enter into a lease agreement and such other documents necessary to lease thirty parking spaces from Norwalk Area, number five, eight, eight, Paternal Order of Eagles, Inc. For two years for annual rent of twelve thousand six hundred dollars with three options to extend the term for a period of one year each at mutual agreed upon rent, account noted. And that is the consent calendar. Back to you, Mr. President.
Thank you, council member Livingston. Um, you've heard the reading of the consent calendar. Um, who's in favor? Uh, online, I can't see, um, we have hands up online, Mr. Mayor?
I don't see any. Um, Mr. Kite's just raised his hand. Mr. Najolski-Eichner, I don't see her hand. Ms. Revolus or Ms. Um, Alterman?
Okay.
Ms. Revolus.
It's, it's unanimous.
Okay.
So, um, the consent calendar for today, April eleventh, twenty twenty-three, is approved.
Thank you. And before we move on, I just want to make a note that we are now looking at the restrooms in the various schools. I know that's been a big issue for a lot of the parents, and I want to commend the council and the members of our staff for really making this happen, and we're just beginning. There will be others. So, uh, it's really great to see. So now we move on to item seven, A, four, Ms. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, item four, authorize the mayor, Harry W. Rilling, to execute a no-cost agreement between the city of Norwalk and I R Cycle LLC for collection and recycling of glass bottles and cans via pop-up events in the city of Norwalk. And if I may say a few words.
Ms. Smith, move the item.
Thank you. Uh, item four and item five, which we do need to move separately because it's two separate contracts, um, are both, um, pilot programs um, as the city continues to move towards more sustainability. Um, this first item is, uh, pop-up recycling, um, events that will happen around the city. Um, it will make it much easier for some people who are unable to, you know, get to this grocery store where you have to, you know, put them in the, um, you know, in the, um, machines. Um, and it'll just make it a lot easier for people. Um, we do have our chief of public works and operations, Vanessa Valaderas, who is here. Um, she can explain more about the program and if anyone had.
Ms. Valaderas, uh, if you would unmute, you have the floor.
Uh, good evening, common council members. Um, so we're trying, uh, to bring more sustainability to the city, so that's why we're presenting uh, those two items for approval tonight. Those will be two pilot programs that we're planning to implement in the next thirty days. So the first one is to have pop-up events where a truck will be coming to certain neighborhoods and we're going to circulate them throughout the city and park them on a parcel or maybe on the right-of-way. And then people will have the option to go there with a bag and they'll be able to fill with glass bottles and some cans and then they're gonna get paid for that bag. So usually they can fit about two hundred bottles on each and they're gonna get ten dollars uh, from the company. So it is exactly the same as if you go to a grocery store and you put your glass bottles into the machine. Um, so the first time they can bring their own bags, uh, but after that, they go, they will have the option to buy bags from the vendor for fifty cents. So the idea, as Mrs. Smith just said, is that we want to bring the recycle option to some of the neighborhoods that cannot drive or do not have the means to go and recycle. Um, of course, with that, there will be a lot of public outreach. We're not gonna just bring up the truck without the people knowing, so we're gonna make sure that people in that area will be aware of what is going on. So that is the, the first item that we want to, for approval.
Thank you. Any comments or questions, Mr. Livingston?
Yeah, I, I just want to commend the public works project, uh, team, uh, for once again, uh, bringing these pilot programs to the city, like the, uh, food waste. And I just want to note, um, one big point that this takes these items out of the waste stream. So not only does this not cost us anything, it should hopefully reduce the cost of waste. So I think that's another big plus that's worth highlighting. So again, thank you and your team. Uh, Barbara, thank you, Ms. Smith, for, for all you've done here too. So thank you.
Further comments, Ms. Young?
Yeah, I, I also like to say, I, you know, I'm, I'm pleased about this innovative idea and, and it really is bringing inclusion to the city so that we are really thinking about all of our residents and what their barriers might be in participating in some of these efforts. And so I'm just pleased that that's going to happen. I know it's going to take a lot of scheduling and a lot of, you know, ups and downs. I'm trying to figure this thing out, but I think we're on the right path and I appreciate the vision, um, that you had for this.
Thank you. Ms. Smith?
Yes, and I actually would like to take a moment to, uh, commend Ms. Valaderas. Uh, Vanessa, you're really doing a great job and you're really listening to, uh, the concerns of council members and the public around sustainability and, and I really appreciate your forward thinking. Um, I, I do want to make a note, we did talk about this in, in the committee.
Um, I, I do want to make a note, we did talk about this in, in the committee, um, because, um, the, 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 um, both high schools, it's actually for the band. They do fundraisers with their can and bottle drives. And so, you know, we did talk about the, uh, the fact that, you know, we don't want to do it on days where, where the high schools are doing those fundraisers um, and maybe not right in those areas, you know, because that's something that they, they, they really count on, both bands really count on the, on that. So, um, thought it was worth mentioning here.
Good. Thank you. Any further comments? Uh, before we take the vote, I just want to say, this is just another example of the city's commitment to sustainability, to, uh, being carbon neutral, uh, to having, uh, any way that we can find a way to uh, reduce our reliability on fossil fuels and to clean up our city. This is absolutely amazing. And again, I also want to thank, uh, uh, Ms. Valaderas and, uh, Ms. Smith. This is an amazing, uh, pilot program and I'm looking forward to see how it works. Uh, seeing no further comments, uh, all in favor? And in the, okay, and Mr. Kites, I think you raised your hand. Uh, so again, thank you. The motion passes. Item seven, A, five.
Authorize the mayor, Harry W. Rilling, to execute a no-cost agreement between the city of Norwalk and Discover Books for placing a collection bin for used books at the transfer station. And if I may make a few comments about that, um, you know, again, as you know, uh, instead of, you know, chucking the books, which I think this, you know, sadly, a lot of people do and you don't know what you're going to do to your books. Um, being able to take them to the transfer station where they can be collected and recycled, um, i- is really a great thing. And so, um, I would like to just turn it over to Ms. Valaderas again to explain the details of the particular program.
Ms. Valaderas, if you'll unmute yourself, you have the floor.
Thank you. Um, so first I just want to stay, just to address what you guys said before, um, I have to also give credit to. So I'm just the one presenting, but we also have Mr. Tor and Mrs. Bird that help us to get those initiatives. So back to the books. So the idea now is that we're going to put a book bin at the transfer station. So as of now, unfortunately, all the books that get disposed just get haul out from our transfer station. So the idea here is to recycle. Um, and there is a company that does that. So they're going to, uh, not only place the bin there and then they're going to be responsible to come and take it out. And what they do with the books is that they donate some of them to some schools nationwide, some libraries. Some of them they do sell and the ones that are in very bad use, they ended up recycling them, make pulp and that will become insulation to homes. Um, so that's why we think that it's a very good use for the used books that ended up just in our, uh, transfer station. Um, also, I just want to mention that we will take any types of books, so can be soft cover, hard cover, even DVDs and CDs, they're going to be collecting as well.
Thank you. Uh, further comments, questions? Okay, seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Abstention, motion carries unanimously. Again, thank you, Ms. Valaderas and Ms. Smith. Next item. I'm sorry?
Mr. Tori.
Mr. Tori, yes, I see you here. I'm sorry, Chris. Uh, all of, uh, I'm all in favor. Uh, I am seven, C, one, Mr. Kites.
Thank. Uh, item C, one, approve the F Y twenty twenty four capital budget with noted amendments. Um, I like to move that item, just quickly speak to it if I may, please.
Mr. Kites, move the item. You have the floor.
Uh, just, uh, I mean, just a rough recap, a total bonded amount for this capital budget is forty eight million, four hundred forty thousand, six hundred and ninety two. Uh, just like other, uh, capital budgets in the past, I had the opportunity to speak to, uh, nearly all the department heads and kind of get a feel of what they've been recommended is, uh, is, uh, will, will they still be able to achieve their goals? And the feedback I got was yes. Uh, this was, uh, one of those years where everyone felt like they, they, they're, they've been allocated enough funding to achieve those goals. So that's always a good thing. Uh, the one change that the, uh, Economic and Community Development Committee made was, uh, at the request of the Board of Education. Um, and that was to move seventy five thousand dollars from two, uh, counts within their budget to the Brookside Monastery Program. Um, the committee felt like this was appropriate. They, uh, made a good case and they're going to be able to expand that program and better help our kids. So the committee, um, fully supported that, hoping the, um, council will do, uh, to, do us and follow, follow the committee's lead. Um, so that's pretty much it.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Kites. Uh, any further discussion or comment? Ms. Smith?
Yes, thank you. Once a marching bear, always a marching bear, always band mom. I would like to thank you, Mayor and the B E T for including the band instruments, um, in the, you know, for, for placing that back in. Uh, those band programs, uh, change lives. They really change lives and the instruments are very expensive. Um, even to rent them are expensive for some of, of our kids. So it just opens it, opens the bands up to more kids uh, who might not be able to afford it otherwise. So thank you for that.
I appreciate that. Gives me an opportunity, by the way. Thank you. Uh, you know, the bands, both Brian McMahon, Norwalk High School, uh, they give us national recognition with their programs. We also see the middle schools, uh, when I went there, they call them junior highs, but the middle schools where they had start the band programs, uh, they are the future of the Brian McMahon and Norwalk High School. And so it's critically important we give them the tools, uh, and, and the instruments to do and, and keep us, you know, to keep winning these different competitions. And it's interesting because I don't know who else had the opportunity to see the Brian McMahon High School play Chicago. I went there. I wish I had known that it was so good because I would have gone back again. It was absolutely amazing. The talent of those young individuals, the singing, the choreography, the acting, the scenery, everything was absolutely amazing. I felt like I was in a Broadway play. So I want to commend the Brian McMahon High School Drama Club. Uh, I know I've been to Norwalk High School, uh, programs as well, equally as good. Uh, we just have some wonderful talent here in the city of Norwalk and that's why we think, you know, it was really critical to add that back into the capital budget. Any further discussion? Mr. Hoover?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just, I also wanted to say thank you and echo, echo what, um, uh, Mr. Thompson said earlier, just thank you for putting back some of that money for the East Avenue Corridor Study. Um, I think it's really important. It's a stretch of, uh, road that we sort of, uh, don't think about from time to time, but we all use a lot and I think it needs some attention and I appreciate that you put that money back in so that we can look at the study and a design, uh, to make that, uh, artery better and safer for all of us.
Thank you. Uh, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the approving the F Y twenty twenty four capital budget with amendments? It passes unanimously. Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Kites, for your work. Uh, next we have, uh, one item that we have to add to the agenda, I believe, Mr. Uh, Mr. Burnett?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, uh, I would like to move to suspend the rules. And, um, uh, to suspend the rules and add the following item, the National Opioid Settlements as to defendants, um, Telva, um, Allegrin, C V S, Walgreens and Walmart to the April eleventh, twenty twenty three agenda.
Okay, uh, all in favor of amending the agenda?
Excuse me, but, but before we, before I move this, um, can we move to amend the, um, the, um, uh, the agenda. We have two council members that wish to reclusive themselves before we move into this discussion.
Yeah, I know, whether Mr. I'm going to ask you, Camacho.
Let the record show that, um, Councilmember Ed Camacho, as well as Councilmember Nora Nogelski-Eichner are reclusive themselves at this time.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, uh, there's been a motion to amend the agenda to include, include the item as written, uh, is any discussion on that?
We're moving into executive session.
No, we don't need to.
Oh, we don't? Okay.
Yeah.
Great.
Uh, and we'll explain why.
Okay.
Uh, like to, so all in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Uh, so Mr. Burnett, if you'll now make this motion?
I'll now read the motion for the foregoing reasons is respectfully requested that the common council or city of Norwalk authorize Mayor Harry W. Rilling to enter into any and all agreements and other documents, including the participation forms necessary to effectuate the settlement of the National Opioid Litigation as to the following defendants. Telva, Allegrin, C V S, Walgreens and Walmart.
Okay.
And we have, uh,
Mr. Mr.
Assistant Corporate Counsel, Brian Candela, on to bring additional commentary to this item.
Mr. Candela, you have the floor. If you would explain briefly what this, uh, settlement is about.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, uh, members of the common council. Um, this, uh, settlement that comes before you today, um, is part of a national, uh, settlement uh, that was, uh, achieved in late twenty twenty two and early twenty twenty three. Again, with three pharmacy chains, C V S, Walgreens and Walmart, and two additional manufacturers, Allergan and Tiva. Um, the, uh, settlement amounts are national amounts. And this item is up for, uh, is up for, uh, vote, uh, to allow Mayor Rilling to enter into the agreements, uh, so that, uh, the city can participate in the recovery of funds uh, that will be coming, uh, through the state of Connecticut and then being dispersed out to all the municipalities. Um, if the, uh, if this agreement, uh, is, if this, if the council votes to allow the mayor to enter this agreement, uh, then there would be a guaranteed recovery, uh, from these five defendants. Uh, the amount is to be determined, um, based on, uh, what each state receives. Uh, however, if this isn't approved, um, then there would be an extremely high likelihood that there would be no recovery at all uh, because the, uh, sister case is up on appeal, uh, the case had been dismissed. So this, uh, agreement would effectuate and allow the city to recover guaranteed recovery as to five defendants. Uh, if it isn't, uh, if Mayor Rilling isn't allowed to effectuate the settlement, then there is a high likelihood that we wouldn't receive any money at all. So again, this is guaranteed money, um, and we have to effectuate, uh, the settlement documents uh, in the near future, uh, in order to, uh, participate in the recovery.
Thank you, Mr. Candela. Any comments or questions? Mr. Hooverman?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, um, Mr. Candela, a question is, what do we, what do we give up by signing on to this agreement? Is there anything that we, that we lose for, uh, going down in the future from these other litigations?
No, so these are, th- this, this settlement only pertains to five of the defendants. There was already a settlement in twenty twenty one where the city has already received some money from original defendants. These are new defendants. Um, there's potential other defendants that are still ongoing, whether it's on stay or because of bankruptcy or uh, things of that nature. But if the, uh, if the agreement is effectuated, then there's a guaranteed recovery as to those five. Uh, if we don't, then there's a high likelihood we won't recover because the sister case was, uh, dismissed and is up on appeal. Um, and obviously, uh, the appellant is at a disadvantage in that regard.
Does this, this doesn't preclude us from being involved in any other, uh, opioid litigation?
Uh, as it pertains to these five defendants, these five defendants would be out. They're settling, settling nationally for billions of dollars. So as it pertains to these five defendants, yes, it would be the end, just like it was the end for the original defendants back in twenty twenty one. Uh, there are some additional defendants, but those are still up in the air. But thi- this is for these five. This would be a finality and it's for all states and municipalities that want guaranteed recovery.
Thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Livingston?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, Mr. Candela, so are there other outstanding ca- uh, cases involving the city in this area?
Um, there are. It's my understanding that there are some, still some other defendants. I believe there's one in bankruptcy. Um, so it's my understanding that that, uh, you know, that, that's still up in the air as to what's going to happen, how the bankruptcy gets discharged. Uh, so this is, so there are defendants that could continue, but as it pertains to the ones that have previously been settled in twenty one, those are done. And this, uh, these settlements of these five defendants in twenty twenty two would end those defendants. Um, and, uh, there might be other ones, but again, there's, there's bankruptcies involved and things of that nature. Those are still uncertain.
But I guess I'm asking, uh, these are the only ones you're aware of at this particular moment?
Correct, correct. We were notified by National, uh, Council.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Further questions or comments? Seeing none, call the vote. All in favor? Uh, opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Ms. Revolus?
Thank you, everybody.
Motion to adjourn?
Uh, we have a motion to adjourn. What a surprise. All in favor?
It's outside.
Opposed?
He's gone.
We are adjourned at eight twenty eight P M. Thank you all.
Good night.
I'm sorry, Ms. Shanahan. I, I, I'm sorry.
Oh, I know. She's taking over on it. It's all her.